I agree.
Yep.
Please stand and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, in the great struggle for liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Rokehold.
Mr. Clausen.
Here.
Mr. Cox.
Here.
Mr. Raven.
Here.
Mr. Fitz.
Here.
Mayor Hall.
Here. Consent agenda items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will occur unless a council member requests the item to be removed from the consent agenda. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it will be considered elsewhere on the agenda for this meeting. Prior to asking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, the mayor will ask if anyone desires to remove an item from the consent agenda in public discussion. Would anybody like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Thanks. Okay, I move to approve the minutes in a regular meeting of September 30, 2024, and the bills and payroll for the first half of September 2024. Can I have a second to that motion?
Thank you.
Mr. Cox and Rokehold.
Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Raven.
Yes.
Mr. Fitz.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. Presentations, petitions, and communications. This portion of the city council meeting is reserved for persons who desire to address the council. The Illinois Open Meetings Act mandates the city council may not take action on comments received on matters that have not been identified on this agenda. But the council may direct staff to address the topic or further matter for action on the agenda for another meeting. Persons addressing the council are requested to limit their presentation to three minutes and to avoid repetitious comments. We would also ask that you change your address for the record as well as stand when speaking. Would anybody like to address the council? Other than, we do have one guest in just a minute. Anybody? Anybody online? Okay, so first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna acknowledge a special employee in the city. And that is gonna be?
Yes, indeed. That's me, Shannon Lau. Very, very awesome career for the city. You started here as a laborer back in eighty-six. You've actually been here, what, thirty-eight years?
Yeah.
Including that. Wonderful. So thirty-five wonderful years. Probably the most expert welder in town, is what I hear. And always first to work, always first to, always had coffee pot on. Commissioner Clausen has challenged you to a wrestling match after this. So.
Yeah.
But huge, huge, huge shoes to fill. I can't, I can't overstate that. And I know other commissioners have been, been over the department a lot longer than I have. And, but I certainly appreciate all that you've done. And appreciate it. Now do a plaque if anybody else wants to say anything or comment on Shannon.
I will. Not only all those years, Shannon, but Shannon was an employee that appreciated, appreciated the opportunity with the city and what it, what it gave back to him. So he was a good, good employee and city really does appreciate, appreciate everything.
I will say that I've met Shannon. He maybe remembers this when he was in high school. You changed a little bit, but not much.
That's good.
But, but you've been a great employee and I've certainly appreciated the work you've done. It's a good operator. It really do. It's really my hundred percent to be this plaque. Well, I don't appreciate you so much for the city. Years nineteen eighty-nine and two thousand.
I want to thank Susan and Kyle very much for all the assistance they gave. Lots of her and all that.
And you had a good wife, a good wife on those long nights, pond snow.
Yeah, she, she's the same.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, before we go on to new business, we're gonna have a presence because the first item on there involves one speaker that we're gonna have here. So go ahead and do that first. I think it'll be helpful. And this is Amy Baschetti.
Speaker Mayor. And thank you, Jim Hidricks and Susan. My name is Amy Baschetti. I'm the Community Revitalization Services Manager for the Illinois Housing Development Authority. And I've been working with Alex and the rest, and the mayor and several other folks on the housing committees on this community revitalization plan for about eighteen months now. So this is the culmination of the work we've been doing. Hopefully you, you will find it helpful in your community. And I'm going to quickly go through it. I'm not gonna hit everything, but I am gonna try to hit the high points. So I know I haven't got to think up a few things. But thank you for being here and thank you for attending. So the community revitalization program, we started again working with Alex eighteen months ago to determine how, might address housing issues in Mattoon. Being at what housing needs might be, addressing perception versus reality. And so that's the purpose of our meeting today this evening. This is where the, I'm fortunate enough to adopt the plan. This is where the adoption recommendation goes. So an executive summary. So for an executive summary, I came to town in May, I believe, to discuss goals and recommendations based on all of the work that we've been doing. So the executive summary goes a little bit into that. The housing goals specifically are to establish an enterprise zone focused on housing to access all available tools. And then to develop more small homes and rental homes to increase affordability and provide a life cycle of housing for local employees, young professionals, families, and seniors to sustain and grow. So for the local context, you can see where, where she was located in the state. Alex sends a lot of writing on local context, which I think is really helpful. Talking that we discussed a little bit about Winters Bagels and then coming to town and Bagel Fest. And so I included an image of Winters Bagel Struck. They also talked a little bit about model makers and sportsmanship and how much that's going to provide for the economic development. Great. The whole city was the strategy area. We chose to do the whole city because we found that these issues that were identified were, are pretty common across the whole community. Housing stock is relatively old, with thirty percent of it being constructed prior to nineteen thirty-five. Gavin financing for new single-family homes and non-infill areas, lighted portions of the community. High poverty ratio of two and a half percent as of twenty twenty-two census. Past planning efforts, you do have a comprehensive plan that was adopted in April of twenty thirteen. And so we did take a look at that and include that in our committees. Then we go into our assets and amenities. I'm sure you're all familiar with all of the different businesses and retail amenities and transportation that are available to be mentioned. Alex again, Rokehold inviting these for us. We've got this very long list and we have an asset map. And I would note that if there are edits after, after this meeting and after the city, if the city chooses to adopt it, then I can make those edits. Then we go into the demographic, economic, and housing market conditions and market analysis that we completed as part of this process. Talking about age cohorts, racial cohorts who compared to our, our other compares in cities of Mount Vernon and Rantoul, Charleston, and Effingham, as well as Coles County and otherwise. Educational attainment, we see shares of population that are veterans, also shares of visibilities. Economic conditions, employment income, sub-labor force participation, unemployment, poverty and poverty assistance. And housing market conditions, we see renters versus homeowners of a median age, housing stock occupancy and vacancy. Housing values, we see in Mattoon, they're a little bit lower than they are in Effingham, but comparable to Coles County and the other comparison. Housing costs again are, are comparable to our other communities. This just goes into the primary market area, which we determined, because we're working on the entirety of the municipality of Mattoon, the market area includes the five census tracts that are part of the overall municipal boundaries within Coles County. This is some of the data that we looked at at Ida when we're considering new housing applications. It includes impact over time, home population, poverty statistics, prospering, health, whatever it's like. And this goes into the community planning process, which I worked with the community of housing, the housing committee on student vote. Sorry, that was actually even on Master of Emergency. They met a number of times over the last few years. And I'm going to have a stakeholder group. We've had about, I've been probably two thousand times. I was back to with stakeholder meetings, two community meetings. Then we go into the community needs assessment survey that the community did last year. We got about five hundred and sixty-four total responses, which is a fantastic response rate. I really appreciate all the work that you guys put in getting those responses. And so those, that was in the field from May of twenty twenty-three and January of twenty twenty-four. We did leave it in a field for a long time, just to make sure we got as much response as we could get. And those questions covered housing economy, mobility within the city, education and wellness, as well as community engagement and initiatives. So how about people who are communicating with their city? We had public meetings, the pick-up meeting was in May twenty twenty-three. I returned to Mattoon in September of twenty twenty-three to do a housing stock survey training, which was with Alex and some GIS students from Lakeland, from Lakeland College. They were, they performed a lot of the housing stock survey, which was enormously helpful. We had a community meeting in March of this year where I did a lot of help and drawing to get folks to tell us what they really wanted out of the city to start, stop, continue, how the city best helped their neighbors. And then we had, and so we had that brainstorm. And then this is the, just goes through some of the results from that field type of polling from the community that we've had. People were really responsive, so I think it's, it's really great. There's a lot of really interesting information. These pages, there's a lot of it, so I'm gonna go through it quickly. So start, stop, continue. There's a lot of folks that really would, to appreciate the city investing in lift or at least city affordability, sidewalks, tearing down naked structures, lighting light. And then one of the city investing strengths, people really have a lot to say about steam work, agriculture, schools, sports facilities, they really are a lot of assets to work. I think you should be proud of what you've done. And then they go through one of the city of Mattoon's weaknesses, which will speak many of them in many smaller communities of the state. Limited shopping, limited retail, that kind of thing, less diversity. And so then we looked at which, which priorities, which items should be priorities for Mattoon. Renovating existing housing coming down on top, followed by maintaining safer properties. Folks ranked important, ranked priorities, so affordable housing got the first priority. Then we talked about types of housing development, what kind of housing design, what kind of housing does Mattoon need more of. Family housing is always gonna be a popular choice. Then what should Mattoon's housing stock look like in the future? This is really useful. There's a wide range, more subdivisions, single-family homes or apartments, more three-plus bedrooms. Some people are looking for larger units, maybe for larger families. Affordable options, multi-family, variety is really, I think, what, what folks are looking for. And this one's always interesting. If you were in charge of the city's budget, which items would you invest in? The largest is affordable housing, followed by. And how can the city of Mattoon better support you and your neighbors? Focus on housing, better infrastructure, code enforcement. We see nothing terribly else there. Then the, the next step that we took as part of this process was the housing stock survey, where those GIS students and Alex and some of my staff came to Mattoon and actually literally walked a lot of the city, just to look at all these properties and determine quality of housing, quality of structures, creating a fancy map for the city. So this methodology, we worked with the community. It was conducted from September of twenty twenty-three through January of twenty twenty-four. Obviously limitations are training on the app that we use, which would be our field maps app. An error, it's a lot, it's a large survey, it's a lot of property to look at, so there's gonna be some level of sheet error we tried to, as far as. But the city was split up into eighty-four zones to make surveying a little bit easier and more organized. Volunteers and those students surveyed a total of six thousand two hundred and seventy-nine structures of parcels in the city of Mattoon. We had categories and grading guides, so we looked at the exterior condition of the residential properties. We looked at roof condition, paint of siding condition, door condition. So if there's, if it's really well maintained, well closed, a lot of overgrowth all the way down to if there is, you know, a bit of debris present. And we looked at sidewalk and street conditions. We did split for mapping purposes. We split the city into six regions, just so we could make the maps a little bit more legible. So we've got north, which is that, that north kind of dogleg off the, the top of the central region. Northwest, north central, east, which is the subdivision on the eastern side of the city. South central and south, which is that other dogleg downstate. So utilization, we see out of six thousand two hundred and seventy-nine data points, we see that about seventy-seven percent of the city is residential. Nine percent classified as commercial. There's not a ton of industrial in the city that's probably mostly outside of the city. But we have one percent of the structures classified as multi-use and almost ten percent are vacant or in open. So there are nation maps for each of the regions. So we have north, northwest, north central, east, south central, south region. If you put all these together, they would make a current land use map for the city. Then we look through your residential type. So we see that of the four thousand eight hundred and sixty-six residential structures that were surveyed, we see about fifty-eight percent of those are single-family detached homes. It's gonna be the majority of your housing through most smaller communities. So that sounds far and good. I did see about thirty-four percent of the structures are single-family detached, so those could be townhomes duplexes. And about four and a half percent were multifamily residential. Let me just go through those through each of the six regions. Do see, again, basically mostly single-family residential, that's single-family detached, that's lighter green through each of these regions. A reduced concentration of mobile homes there in the region. And then we go through vacancy, where we see about ninety-four percent of the residential properties are occupied, with only one point five percent of registering in the survey is vacant, but it's, it, that's gonna be taller. Census data shows us over about ten percent vacant in Mattoon. And so the, the one and a half percent is mainly just because we can't build a lot of houses, just, just by luck. So we see mostly occupied properties throughout each region. Then we go into residential exterior condition. This was entirely a sidewalk survey. None of the volunteers were going onto the property at all. So it's just whatever we can tell from the exterior of the property. Of the structures and residential uses in the city, about seventy-three percent were rated as good or excellent, which is very, very good for a community this size. About three and a half percent were rated as fair or poor. So that's a huge proportion of your housing that's been actually really good, really good shape. Forty-seven percent of single-family residences were in excellent condition, as opposed to thirty-five point seven percent of multifamily. We do see mobile homes have poor quality in general. You can see there. Then we go through the exterior condition maps for each of the regions. We can see, there it is. We've got concentrations of really excellent properties in the, the northwest region. There is a little bit of red and orange and yellow you see in the upper portion of the, the north central region. South central region, you see behind a little bit of concentration of property rated average. We look at it, roofs, eight, uh, eight-seven percent of property, residential properties that are rated as having good shape. So that's always a good sign. We do see a little bit of concentration here along the, along that center line in the northwest region, north central region, again, just a little bit of concentration of fair roofs up there in the left corner. We have paint and siding conditions. Again, the eighty percent of the property that we're rating is in good shape. Yours, again, ninety percent of the properties have been going to good condition, but only one percent with garbage or three percent, three percent that are very overgrown. So from that angle, we don't have a decent problem with the, with the. Again, you see similar concentrations. Sidewalks, we see sidewalks in pretty good shape in the city. About sixty percent are in good shape, about sixteen percent of average, with six percent in poor condition. We see no sidewalk present or about fifteen and a half percent of the city in the survey. Some places where it's gray, there's no sidewalk present. Four sidewalks are in the north central region. Free conditions, but again, ninety percent of the street in Mattoon City that were, that were classified, classified as in good condition. Let's turn to the numbers for it. So now we're gonna go into market analysis tools that we use at Ida. We use these to determine some, some of the scoring for our tax credit application. And it's really just, they're publicly available tools. So anybody can go onto our website at any time, pick out where they wanna look at and be able to see all of this information. So Ida market analysis application, if you choose whatever area that you wanna look at, and this bird will be identified, subtract, but make up the city of Mattoon. Goes through all of that data, just as a aggregate. The community revitalization strategy area market snapshot is a requirement of the loan of the tax credit application, but it's just, and so it's included here and it's, it's tracking the same data that we saw on the charts for demographic reading, market analysis survey report. Our affordable rental unit survey is, it enables us to examine the estimated number of rental units that are affordable to various income levels, between twenty percent of the area median income and eighty percent of the area median income for any census tract in the state. So those are the affordable units. We're talking about affordable housing. I do want to clarify this. So if you have an area median income, which is just the median of the total amount of incomes in the community, if your AMI is fifty thousand per year, affordable housing costs for household earning fifty thousand per year are fifteen thousand in terms of borders, they're paying twelve fifty a month for rent, utilities, taxes, mortgage. Affordable housing plus for a household earning thirty thousand dollars a year, which is sixty percent of the area median income, is nine thousand a year or seven fifty. So that gives you a good indication of the range we're, we're talking about here. And so these maps show you the percent, the percentage of units that are affordable in this specific income range. So these are thirty percent AMI, so that's extremely low income. The community would not be especially affordable to folks in thirty percent AMI range, however. And sixty percent and eighty percent would see a lot more availability of rental units. So we would, just based on strictly this, you would see that there is a greater need for housing in the extremely low income range, thirty percent AMI or lower. Typically with income levels that, like that, we would see permanent supportive housing, which I was into, housing for facilities, housing for folks maybe just coming out of the correctional system, housing for folks in. The affordability risk index actually measures the risk of loss of affordability in a community. So we look at median household income, home values, families below the federal poverty level, housing unit vacancy, renter tenancy, individuals employed in, in higher income occupation than individuals with a bachelor's degree or higher. And we see how those change over time, how that can impact affordability. So we don't see a huge risk of loss of affordability in the city of Mattoon. The southwest census tract has about a one, but everything else scores zero, so we're not seeing that risk. Revitalization impact areas, again, these are things that we're looking at, at statistics over time, family poverty, employment, median household income, housing vacancy rate, concentration of affordable housing limits. And we designate revitalization impact areas to tell us where, what census tracts might be most right for community revitalization planning or for affordable housing. So we see the entire city of Mattoon is a, is a high revitalization impact area, so we think that the community would really benefit from some really concentrated planning and activities. Our quality of life index, which the city scores between a three and a six, depending on the structure, or a quality of life index, which measures, measures education, prosperity, health, housing quality, activity in the city. And so now we get into our goals and objectives, which we had to talk about, I think, at the end of May. And so for our vision statement, twenty forty-five, Mattoon is an attractive and growing community, great jobs for residents, and great schools for students, affordable housing for young families, seniors, rural workers. And first, shopping and dining environment, new recreation and nightlife activities that create a welcoming place for recent, recent college graduates. Need to put a period there, I think. So among the first goals that we mentioned earlier during the summary, establishing an enterprise app focused on housing to access all new available tools. We can get this done relatively quickly between one and two years, to establish tax abatements for construction materials, for new housing, tax incentives to home builders to acquire incentives for private financing of residential rehabs. Next is develop more small homes and rental homes to increase affordability and provide a life cycle of housing for local employees, young professionals, families, and seniors to sustain growth. So we, I came up with a number of objectives, or we worked together to, for the number of objectives under this line, one is, one of which is working with Central Illinois Land Bank Authority to assemble vacant parcels for housing development, especially in Tewa District and the city regions. So that should be able to happen relatively quickly, one to two years. Incentivizing infill housing on more central parcels rather than outer branches of the community, that'd be two to four years approximately. Uh, demolishing giraffe structures, prioritizing central infill parcels, which are already good and ongoing. Developing zoning or ordinance to allow construction of different types of housing, including time bumps, accessory dwelling units, and which are other law labs, basically. In planned unit developments on individual parcels of larger plots. That zoning ordinance, I, your process, I see that taking one to three years, it could take a little bit longer depending on community support for it. Working with the loan for housing tax credit developer to develop rental housing, that's, it's a long process, I'm not gonna lie to you. We've been here for thirteen, for eighteen months, and from application to placement service, it's been over two years. So that's, that's a time-consuming process. We think maybe three to five years for a new tax credit offering. Work with Coles County Landlord Association to examine potential rental, rental standards to keep local rental housing safe, decent, and affordable. That's something that hopefully is already ongoing, but in the next, well, one to three years, we think is a, is a good objective. Investigating essential home rule legislation and its possible impacts, particularly on local rental housing. That's gonna be another long-term process. The community is able to vote on whether it wants to access home rule, but that's gonna take a lot of education of the community and a lot of determining of where do you wanna go. We'll call that predefined. Finally, we'll examine the impacts of possible annexation or expansion of Mattoon municipal boundaries to expand the fact base and make population growth areas. That's gonna be a long-term process. We think that'll be about five to seven years. And finally, developing more diverse dining, retail, recreational, and nightlife options. So establishing an identity for Mattoon, the market set, the person attractive place to move. Mattoon in motion is already a good vehicle for this activity that's ongoing. Attracting or establishing public transportation, such as taxi, Uber, Lyft, nighttime. Uh, attracting or establishing public transportation, uh, such as taxi, Uber, Lyft, nighttime shuttle, et cetera, to encourage more nighttime social activity and local bars and restaurants, for a number of folks that that's something that they tend to see in the city. Um, but that, I don't really have a good idea, if it's to attract, attract service, so we'll call that predefined. Um, and finally, incentivizing types of retail and dining that don't already exist in Metune, uh, to encourage local entrepreneurs to branch out, uh, or attract new investors in the community, that may require a market stage, takes time, that's why. And then we go into our funding and implementation, uh, we're working on housing tax credits, away Ida funds rental housing for, for family units. It's a longer process, but we've, uh, we've got really beautiful developments in other communities, I love this place you go. Um, the Tiger Senior Apartments, the ones there on the upper left, are actually an old face school in Paris, Illinois. Um, they turned it into senior apartments, it took a lot of work and had a lot of special operation, and thank you for the stuff with, with buildings like that. They, uh, they put in, I think, forty-five units. Um, the senior apartments, they're beautiful, nice, they managed to belong to the library and the gym and the lockers. There are folks who were, who moved in, who actually attended high school there. Um, cottage apartments are normal, there's a nice looking Emerald Bridge, Sultan, uh, here on the bottom one, I can't hit it to the, all the other two. Uh, but those are, those are all rental units, they're structured as single-family cottages, they're all different from each other, they've all raised, the property don't. And so these are the guidelines and requirements we have for our, our tax credit process, uh, if you want to score the community revitalization. That's something a developer would take on if you trapped a loan, a tax credit developer to build multifamily rental units, that's something they would take on and work with, with you to gain access to this plan, uh, to submit it, basically, for scoring the applications. And with affordable housing tax credits, we've got a number of both state and federal resources. Um, City of Metune has the revolving loan fund, uh, the enterprise zone, it's pretty close together, our funds and plan unit development zoning classification, available locally, got five, I think, five to the districts. Metune districts, there is an enterprise zone in the city that, uh, is central part of the city, that dogleg off the south that extends over east to Charleston. Um, there aren't any opportunity zones, unfortunately, but there are plenty of historic places in the city of Metune, I've got four listed out here, and historic tax credits are always a option. Uh, DCEO has a number of programs, mostly aimed at, at infrastructure, so, uh, street repair, broadband, uh, construction apprenticeships programs, they've got a lot of programs that would be available as well. And also through Ida and the departments, we've got a home repair accessibility program that's aimed at homeowners, um, to make, to make health and safety improvements to their homes. Uh, we have a land bank capacity and technical assistance program, uh, strong police program, which actually grants funds to the municipality itself, uh, to address the poor and the needy. Uh, we've got a number of rental housing resources, but counseling, homeowner resources, and then the dependencies and glossary sources and references, all of the census data, all of the data from the certain community needs assessment survey. The charts from that. I have a program, a cool way to access that program, this is the, the cover of the, that's April twenty thirteen, um, and just a little bit of the vision of that. Thank you.
Amy, you have done a great job in twenty minutes here, or fifteen minutes, explaining a two-hundred-page document. And, uh, and also telling us about eighteen months of work, and I know Alex was key to getting to where we are today, along with a lot of other organizations and people that were involved in this. You know, a long time ago, this group got together and said housing was one of the most important things that we need to work on. Uh, that was four years ago, or almost four years ago, and it really is today, particularly with all the growth that we do have. Uh, most of the things that you covered, uh, you sure have a horizon of about one to five years, a lot of things could happen if we focus on those things, and we need to, uh, to do that. It's sort of the comprehensive plan of housing, is what you've got here, and that fits into a plan that we've already got, which we, we need to update, uh, you know, our own comprehensive plan for the city. I know it's because it's starting to get, you know, ten years old or so now. So, you know, right now, I, I know, uh, you wanted to come here, and I'm very glad you did, because, uh, people that don't have a chance to go through all this, you know, we've learned a lot, I wish we had taped all this, because it would be a great, you know, presentation, uh, but we've got. Yeah, it is ready, it is all, yeah, yeah, it's great, because it, you know, we can use something like this. So, anyway, this, one of the questions always comes up, why did we do all this? You know, there's a lot of information that we put together, a lot of data, but in order to get financial support, in order to start planning to get things moving ahead, this is the document that we need. And, uh, and, you know, I think you've done, you know, you've done a great job, again, I know Alex, uh, has done an awful lot for us. Yeah, so, so that's, uh, that's certainly good. You know, we had, we haven't, uh, this is where I want to get some comments sort of from the council, but, you know, we've got an agenda item here to pass a motion on something, you know, just adopting this plan, but we also haven't had a lot of time to look at it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, we just really got this document, two hundred pages long, uh, to really look at. I don't know, I, I'd like to see how everybody feels about it, but I'm tempted to say, let's don't vote on this tonight, let's give everybody at least, uh, two weeks to, to go through this, and then bring it back before the council, and, and we're really just, we are adopting a plan, and we're not really committing to a lot yet, there's a lot of things that go behind this, but this helps us get there. So I don't know how, I'd like to, I'd be curious how the council feels about.
I, I'll start. I, I think a two-week, where we can kind of go back through some of this information, and then maybe, Mayor, if you may, you have a point of contact, like, say, Alex, where we can email any questions that, and then be forwarded to Amy in that two-week period, that would be good.
There, there is some minor things in the report, and you mentioned, uh, that we can make edits, use that, use that term, uh, to, to, uh, either correct some things or modify some things a little bit, and I think probably everybody that sits down and looks at this will find a few things, and I can point out a couple that, that, uh, if I weren't going to have time to do right now, that I, because I, that's one of the things I think we want to do. So if, Jerry speaking, I think.
I agree with you, I think it's a matter of principle processes, it's just a good idea to allow everyone to have, uh, time, opportunities, uh, where they feel to review and come up with questions.
Right.
Regardless of housing or any type of plan that we're going to be adopting, I think it's free to have a little bit of time.
And Sandy, you feel the same?
Yep, I concur.
This is my, this would be my motion to make, I just won't make this motion, we'll just, we'll just, um, we'll be just clear on the agenda of meetings, October first, I think is our next meeting, uh, and, and really address it then. I would feel more comfortable if everybody had a chance to, you know, to look at it, and that's not a negative thing at all, we just didn't, you know, we just didn't get this in front of everybody quick enough. But, but yeah, I think it was hell, it's a great introduction to just people, to see kind of what you're going to be looking at.
Um, if I can take back, so a lot of work's been done over the last eighteen months, uh, across the board, um, lots of good things that, uh, that you mentioned that are happening. So based on your experience in this, one to five years, next one to five years of testing, thinking, what's, uh, what are some of the challenges that communities have seen to implement?
Well, I mean, the money's always going to be an issue for them to implement, um, but we've, you know, we offer a number of different funding programs that could assist the access, uh, and we're happy to help facilitate that access as much as we can. Um, I mean, the one to five years, based on how motivated the community has to look forward and make changes, I think many of them are fairly simple changes if you have the community support behind them. I mean, ultimately, the, the real sticky point is, like I said, would be the financing for new housing, but, you know, we can get the new ordinance done in a relatively short amount of time, again, assuming communities are, um, and change the kind of outlook on, you know, I know there's, there's been, um, you know, a lot of debate between landlords and renters and homeowners, and the city is, is perfectly free to decide whether it wants to bring in more rental housing, what income housing it wants to, to bring in. I would recommend if you do find yourself interested in, uh, willing specifically to tax credit housing development, that you contact the Illinois Housing Council, who will have developers who can specialize in this area, who know what would fit into the community, um, I, I think that that's, that's a good option to go. But none of the state government processes are fast, um, they're all pretty slow. Um, so, you know, I can say that if you started, if you found an investor today for a tax credit property, you're probably just have people moving into that home in three years. So the, just the process of getting the financing pulled together is always, is always time, mainly allocation process, it's always time consuming. It's, it, the combination of things, I think, between ordinances, working with the land bank, where we can install properties if you can, you know, kind of, uh, buy some of those properties into a larger parcel to get, you know, a apartment building or a series of, that happened relatively quickly. Structure takes time. I would say the things here most likely to come in conflict, well, to have, uh, time consuming trouble with is the community support and, in my experience, Metune is very supportive of community economic and housing development, and really just pulling the financing, it's, it's just a very complex one.
Amy, I have a question, sort of related to this. And, and if we were really to get aggressive about this, do we need to have, get funding for hiring a person that's dedicated, this project, that's basically a housing manager? Is that something that we should look at, or do you think?
I think that's, that's all that necessary currently, um, because, I mean, Alex and I have been working together, and he did a fantastic job, um, and I also think that between the, his community economic development title is going to be a whole length of work with developers, if you want to bring that back again. Um, and, I mean, I can't speak to your bandwidth, but, um, it, it wouldn't be, you know, as much time as we have spent together over the last eighteen, so it would be, it would be split time to speak to a couple of developers and.
So like, there's some major communities, and some of them that are doing excellent work, by type, you know, I just got Lori Minor over there, they're literally building single-family homes and two complexes with this tax credit program, uh, and then after fifteen years, those are being sold and become single, you know, owner-owned. So it's a really neat way to start with rentals, and then they eventually become owner-owned, uh, and they're all brand new, so.
I, I would just ask that, if we could try to, within a week, get back to Alex on some of the changes.
Right.
Um, that way, he can get with Amy, and, and she doesn't have to come back for the next council meeting, we could, she, she, yeah, she can't be back, but that way we can have all those changes and, and stuff made before the first, if we're going to look at it.
Amy, I have, uh, one final question. A lot of the data information, we were compared to four other municipalities, without naming names, where have those, any of those four gone with the next step in their revitalization product process?
We have not worked with all of those communities.
Okay.
We, when we start working with the community in the state, we asked the partner lead to, um, to name a few.
Hair girls.
Culture of all our, of what happens, and those were the communities that Alex made.
Gotcha.
I've worked in a few land and rental, um, that was, or actually not.
Gotcha. Thank you. Good presentation.
Any other questions, do my head? Okay, we appreciate you coming, you did a great job. So we're just going to skip. Yeah, you can do that, right. Okay, so we can go directly to the second motion, uh, yes.
Next, not to be discussed, Lord, when it's number twenty-four, nineteen twenty-three, which, the mayor decided now, refreshing agreement by, in Metune, and Kirk W. and Monty T. Swenson, during this, time of, reimbursed after eighteen thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars in tax, and revenues over a one-year period to brick replacement of building, well, in, sixteen-three, and authorized the mayor to sign.
Can I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it, Mayor.
Mr. Phipps, and any discussion, I, I, everybody knows that Kirk's back here, I'm sure he'll be answering any question that we might have, but, and if you have those, go ahead, we can do that now, but we have actually two others, uh, or, yeah, three altogether, I guess, that we, that we would have to decide on. So we can wait till the end, if you'd like, up to you guys. Uh, do you have any comments, if I want to make, any questions on the first one?
I'm good.
Okay, so, ready for roll call?
Mr. Draven. Yeah. Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
Motion to adopt special, that's number twenty-two-four, nineteen twenty-four, authorizing the mayor. Operating the mayor, deciding out, granting a fine between the city and Metune, margin for Swenson, during this, climate, number twenty-two thousand five hundred, clean town tip revenues over a one-year period, for the workplace that have available, played sixteen on two, team four Broadway, authorizing the mayor to sign.
So I have a second to that motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Phipps, and, uh, any discussion on that item? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Draven. Yes. Mayor Hall.
Yes.
Number twenty-two-four, nineteen twenty-five, authorizing the mayor to sign out, granting agreement by the community of the city in Metune, and first one, the All American Trust, number forty-four dash one fifty-seven seventy, granting up to nineteen thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars and twelve cents, for the midtown tent revenues of worth of the period, for a roof replacement of the building, they all played with sixteen-sixty Broadway Avenue, and authorized the mayor.
And a second to that motion.
Second.
Boss, sir, and, uh, any questions on this side? And roll call, please.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Draven. Yes. Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. Motion to adopt special ordinance, number twenty-two-four, nineteen twenty-six, granting an easement to Bluebird Network LLC for the construction of a fiber optics and communications equipment station near the water tower between First Street and Division Street and Richmond Avenue.
And a second on that motion.
Second.
Mr. Cox, and, uh, any comments?
We, we own four, four lots, uh, where the water tower and cellular tower is, lease that we have, kind of across from monitor signs, uh, up there along the bike path, uh, these two grass lots, um, one of them has a cell tower on it, this one would be right to the south of the cellular tower, a fifty-by-fifty lease, but instead of a monthly lease, it's a one-time buyout lease of forty thousand dollars. So, uh, again, it's property we're not using, uh, there still is some grassy area we can use for parking cars, back when we used to use that area as soccer fields, but we don't use that anymore, it's the dog park, but some people can park their cars there and walk to the dog park there. So, shouldn't affect anything.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Draven. Yes. Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. I move to adopt special ordinance twenty-two-four, nineteen twenty-seven, authorizing a renewal agreement with Etna for the administration of the Etna Group Retiree Medicare Advantage Prescription Drug Plan, uh, MAPD, for calendar year twenty-twenty-five, authorize the mayor to sign all documents necessary to complete the renewal. Have a second to that motion.
Second, Mayor.
Mr. Phipps, uh, quick explanation that might be helpful.
Is it, this is just a, basically a renewal of what they currently have, um, it, there is an increase this year, but other than that.
Change.
I think, uh, the retirees are pretty happy with it. Yeah, the, the increase is basically based off of, uh, the overall plans that the government does, so, they've enhanced plans, not really our plan, because ours is special, but other plans, they have enhanced, so all of it's gone up.
Any other questions? Roll call. Any other questions? Roll call.
Mr. Grayman?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes. I move to approve council decision request twenty twenty four, twenty five thirty seven, approving the purchase of one twenty twenty four Ford Explorer police all wheel drive interceptor, the Mattoon Police Department, in the amount of forty five thousand five hundred and fifty seven dollars from Pilsen Auto Sensor. That was second to that motion. Mr. Grayman? Uh.
Anything? It's an insurance claim. We had a, had an individual running from the police, uh, in a car, any T-bone officer, told about the squad car, so. It's just replacement. It's insurance.
Okay.
There will be some contingency based on, you know, the value of insurance isn't going to cover the price of a total new one, but it'll be mostly covered.
Okay. Uh, any other questions? Roll call.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
At St. Anthony.
Mr. Grayman?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
Uh, before the next motion, Kirk, if I could ask, I was just wondering, uh, on the earlier motion, I was gonna ask, when, uh, when do folks first go down then? Twenty fifteen, seen a lot of changes at the, at that time, but when we manned the office, Stephen, that we probably did it on our bills. So quite honestly, last thing, my office, really, and we've been, been involved in the downtown area. I actually thought a little bit of how we're gonna have it outside. Being downtown. And there's sort of a lot of changes, a lot of good things happening down there. So that's, just had that go through my mind and, uh, on the earlier motion, so a good question. Thank you for, uh, for the interview. So with that being said, uh, I make the motion to approve council decision request twenty twenty four dash twenty five thirty eight, approving a two thousand dollar grant by the Touring By Three Committee from F Y twenty four twenty five Hotel Motel Tax Funds to the Lincoln Log Cabin Foundation in support of the B D Harvest Thrall on September twenty eighth to twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, and authorizing the mayor to sign a agreement.
Do you have a second to that motion?
Second.
Mr. Lawson, and any questions on this one?
Comments? Is this the first year for this one?
No.
Yeah, it's, uh, they, 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 you over there with us.
Sure.
Okay, and, uh, roll call.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Grayman?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes. Department report, starting with City Administrator Kyle.
Not a lot. Been working with Susan a little bit on reviewing some of the insurance. Um, I need to be working with Beth on some stuff on Tiff districts, uh, getting information ready, so when the new stores and stuff open up out at the Emerald Bakers, we'll be able to start collecting, uh, that business district tax in January. So we're getting a list of all those together, uh, working on paperwork, on, on easements, trying to get that finalized and, and cuts and checks cut for those easements. Um, but then that, I mean, it's just one thing after another. It's busy, but it's all little stuff and putting out fires every day. I think, I think I need a junior firefighter hat. Uh, open it up for questions if you have any questions. Yeah.
Kitty, kitty, you got that? Bring that kitty sport gun.
Yes, sport gun.
All right, that all you got? See, other questions? Uh, City Attorney, Ian Jones.
Uh, it's been, it's, it's used business, you know, for, for.
Any questions for Dan? All right, City Clerk, Susan, Brian.
Just onboarded the new, uh, engineering technician and, uh, like Kyle said, met with the insurance broker for the M A P D plan and will be getting ready for the other plans. Uh, insurance renewals and, um, open enrollments, et cetera. Otherwise, as usual.
Good. Any questions for Susan? Next is Beth Wright, Finance.
The obvious, three four, including. I'm wrapped in general point of nine twenty five, I, certified of ninety five thousand sixty. Sixteen one. Look at some revenues, those standard pledges, two, little expenditures, seven point five, sixteen, plus two numbers, one each other. And extension, citywide in August, over twenty six, twenty five, moving to twenty seven. This fiscal year versus where we were last fiscal year. Thank you for grabbing that. That would be the family that we sell, but I changed it. You were down, sorry.
All right, yep.
Self, um, almost very flat. Total not seen, broke down. We're certain cash flow number five tonight, eleven twenty three point. Two, no, it's, it's, we tried that, we were loving it too. So like I said, we keep bouncing back and forth. With the top threshold in the bottom. Working on the management discussion now, this is for the audit, so we're getting twelves and getting some finishing touches, and I should be getting the grant.
Any questions for us? All right, so we go to Public Works. Clark?
Well, what keeps all of them? We did finish saving up the school project, accepted by I O D, through process. The other, uh, sidewalk project, starting, uh, sure, that they, uh, basically, I think, almost got purchased. Run that down, they haven't been by their point, they, they, so, great, uh, improved to that building. As far as downtown on the Broadway, ship for the end of this week, we've done that fourteen hundred block on the north side to the fifteen hundred block, south side. Some light bulb started a lot today, so we'll be on both teams and by that.
Good.
We're there.
Yeah. Uh, then, uh, as far as like sports complex, uh, the sanitary line, we did our temporary connection by two days. They have been putting, we put them into those stations, starting to come together out there with that. Still have a really small, I'm putting that line in, yeah, on Friday, so. Oh, finally, it's, let's ready to go. We'll see how they come along with that at their station. That's not under our control. The other part of the, uh, the big project that's really gonna come together as well. We all, sort of, got that board last week. We have, I was gonna do. Probably make this, sometime, I said, to, uh, to, I'm on South Park for birth, that rock pad today. A few curves, but they're speaking forward on Friday and, and, on the side. It's really been a while since I've really come together. I'm sure I missed something.
Very good. Any questions for Dave? Uh, next is a special guest we have here today from the fire department, Andy Plattfelter. I'm sure he's got a well-prepared report.
Yeah, yeah, my partner works here. Now, with this, it sounds like there's something in the air. Uh, that, uh, twenty six, oh, two, this is last meeting. Uh, in there, we had three structural fires, so, um, I have adoption, but it's many to little. Had one, three, I think, probably, three, I think, had. That, uh, it comes out, I'm just, I'm. Little bit of got it. Luckily, the lady slept with the door, turned the door closed. She didn't hear the alarm that's been ringing off, but she heard something about somebody trying to break in. So she was actually, that was the lady, she didn't get out, she went, I don't know. Something was, it's not, so, if she would have went out that door, it would have been very easily been a different story. Uh, that is one of the things that, uh, the state's been pushing for several years, the association and stuff about this term, all of her, basically something like, uh, those are forty doors. They're great, recommend trying to shake it better, but we're, with that. Get several pictures, kind of showing it's amazing, the difference between the rooms that are closed and the rooms that were, as far as the smoke and fire. I think that's, yeah, it's a great job. Obviously, it's always, you know, a little bit scary, you're definitely letting people sleep.
Mm-hmm.
There's some inspection wise, you know, the, the complex and the shops and all that stuff too. Just about eight different inspections and all through, just trying to stay up on that stuff. Training wise, guys have been over, did some different ladder training, so, uh, may have seen this really, kind of, building, some ladder. Did that. They also brought the, that Vegas trailer where Charleston set all the heavy rescue. That obviously, you walk through and sell it, with equipment, stuff that they. Uh, some of the other stuff, the guy's been doing, uh, trying to finish up on the height of the, they're just, they're. Trying to get all that stuff done. Did, uh, collect their N D A. I've got to like, ten thousand dollars, came all the way, three ships. Always liked that tradition, trying to, some of the typical location. Jennifer said, he's been working on the G D N application. He said, asking to get questions. I don't know much about it, but I know it's of a, you know, funding thing as far as medical calls, the Emmett Building, where we're able to get quite a bit of money through some Medicaid calls and stuff like that. Let's do, the new application this year is, uh, August, so we'll be looking on that. He said, uh, we received our invoice for the last two quarters, last year, revenues increased about a hundred fifty thousand. So it's a nice chunk of revenue that we're pretty good on. The other big thing we had here last Saturday, first shut up, same street. Now, uh, we have a, actually, we have long interstate fifty seven, but it's the one ninety two. Last news I got, the guy was still doing all right, saying he ended up, some items over. In doing so, guys, uh, that's, he was carrying, especially a truck. That was in first county, so we're looking at all like trailers, rain bins, doublelifts, and so there was, they're heavy. Lot of, just the guys that kicked him out of that, he was covered in, out of, guys have been, they were covered in tools, so. Just working on that, with, got a list of stuff down there. We got several says it here that, placed, so. It is in charge base. I think that's all.
Good report. Any questions? Kitty? Okay, so, please, Chief Gaines?
Oh, we had nine hundred and forty eight calls for service and forty four arrests in the last two weeks. Uh, had a good community event, Pork Chop Supper, uh, last Friday, out at the range. It was, uh, a good showing again, so appreciate everybody that came out for that and, uh, go forward to doing that every year, like usual. Um, looking into some lateral hires and talked to one today. No, I'm sorry, yesterday. Uh, I'm looking at getting pretty fairly quickly, and I sent you all an email on that as far as who they're replacing and and why I'm meeting them soon, but got, uh, one going back into, to the hospital, would go back to the nurse and, in the O R. Day shift, uh, ten hour days, four days a week, so, planning good for him, uh, but losing him and, uh, so I need to replace him fairly quickly. And another one being a retiree today, so. I could use, I got one that just got out of the academy and two that are in the academy, so I can really use the labors right now, so let's.
Any, any questions? Sam? Uh, okay, next is Arts and Tourism, Angelia, we're good.
Uh, we are, we've had several meetings on the last few weeks over summer events. We met with Mindy and I did Charleston and I handed bearing from the airport, come back. Twenty twenty six fireworks, um, doing the combined air show again, uh, in honor of the fact that it's the main charity, other than my. And so, uh, we must do some special things. Um, and it doesn't actually cost us anymore to be a part of that day combined together, but, um, it's the big, there's our people that are, that are pleasing place, so this won't be like historical, um, celebration exactly, but there might be historical things happening, cause of that, so. Um, you can get a head start on that. Um, we met with a, Mindy and I met with a new, uh, inter team vendor for Bagel Fest, um, that we made a decision to go, so we can, we've been in years, I feel like we're making that, so, I'm good in the right direction. Um, Lightworks, uh, one of the, one of the things that, um, we have out with sponsors is the, the wreath that is about to display. Uh, the, the sponsors love going, and that is one of the things that we've had, we have extra, we've had extra for years, but we don't have extra anymore, so we had to find somebody to make some new ones. Um, and Mindy contacted them, the matching high school, and there's gonna be a couple of students, maybe a few wreaths in the Welling Gardens. So really excited to be able to partner with them on that. And then I've been meeting with, um, the Emerald Bakers, the, 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 folks this last week, talk about some different things that we can work on together and also about, still working on a project, but I hope to be, but.
Good, good deal. Any questions for Angelia? Okay, last but not least, Alex?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of quick items. Uh, so, yeah, working on a mass transit, which needs to cover due for whole town, and, and, together. Also working to get a, a substation upgraded right in the front of. That's basically around the Calcan. Also, uh, this is rest, I'm just looking into grant for, 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 something like that, the whole county, uh, so we're gonna help out with that. Uh, working with the, and foundations, some other groups on the childcare facility that they're planning, potentially, uh, really can't dive too much into it right now, but definitely in the perfect stages of that. And last two things, really just, uh, twelve of them, this is today, uh, just a pretty significant number right now. Uh, and then we maybe have about six or eight land bank acquisitions within the next six months or so, which are essentially an entire city block, that the city of Mattoon altogether, so you're gonna see, hopefully, all that goes well at the court. Significant place live, uh, in that, the town, uh, we can discuss exactly where that is. Last thing, uh, just planning to celebrate downtown Mattoon for, 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 to celebrate Christmas, it's going to be fantastic, live all right now.
Any questions for Alex? Okay, in alphabetical order, comments from the council, and we'll start with Mr. Lawson.
So when I say the best is first, um, Al and TJ and myself, in the next, uh, week or so, we've had applicants for the vacant labor position with the fire department, so we're probably gonna narrow that down to two or three interviews, and then hopefully we'll be able to bring, uh, that to the agenda on October first for council approval. Uh, the, uh, pickleball court dedication back on September eleventh, uh, really went off really well, and before that, we did a, a nice tribute to nine eleven with police and fire present, uh, Mindy's daughter saying the national anthem, just nailed it. Uh, Rick let us in the pledge. Uh, it's really a, a very, uh, I just wanna say, I don't like to turn me emotional so much, but it was a nice, respectful dedication, and then the court dedication. And then just a couple of quick things, um, newspapers, what are you laughing at? I'm just quick. This is a news gazette, Dave Clark, um, Mr. Phipps had, uh, mentioned this two weeks ago, but Dave was honored this past weekend at the University of Illinois, the Lou Li A Spirit Award. So you've been going to football games forty eight years. Forty eighth year, so there is, it was a nice presentation. Obviously, Commissioner Phipps will recognize you two weeks ago, but he would not vouch for a newspaper. And then, let's see, and then also, um, from. And then, let's see, and then also, um, from September eleventh, we have, uh, two distinguished athletes that are sitting up here. One to my immediate left, one with a gavel showing their pickleball skills. So you didn't know I got hurt that night, so.
No, unreversed, again, like Lawson said, that shouldn't have been on the comics page, front page. And, uh, Kyle, in his typical style, he was sitting back this looking, he wasn't doing any things. So I had to carry the weight and get the ball forward.
And you're right, the picture, picture verifies that.
I was directing.
Yeah. Thanks, Mayor, for talking out.
Okay, so, uh, Commissioner Phipps? I mean, Commissioner Cox, I'm sorry. Commissioner Cox.
Yep.
Raven.
In lieu of the, you know, that, 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 for, which is the production.
I would, uh, we'll give you a star for that.
Have bum up being here for, uh, filming. Did a good job. I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Okay. Now I'll go to Commissioner Raven.
I have nothing.
And now we'll go to Phipps.
Uh, thank you, Amy, for coming. Much appreciated. And Alex, all your work on this. Other than that, I have nothing.
Okay, I'm going to be real quick here. Uh, what did I do? Problem solving opportunities in the last week, which is always nice. And then, uh, Illinois, Minnesota League Conference in Chicago is, uh, myself, Kyle, and Alex are going, uh, hopefully to find out other things that would help move the city back even ahead. Uh, the pork chop dinner was very successful with the police department. Uh, we had people from Charleston come over, some fire, firemen, chiefs. Uh, we've got a lot of positive comments about the shooting range. Uh, had a big class there this week, all week, right? Uh, a lot of people in the area talk about that range out there. We don't get enough publicity about it, I think, sometimes. But, uh, it does attract a lot of people up there.
It is absolutely a shoot house. I mean, it's this, it's a really sought after training environment to, to be able to use. I'm only one in Downstate Illinois. A lot of technical teams use these shoot houses, uh, for, for training and moving, uh, through housing. And they've got an advanced SWAT class there this week that's the, you know.
And that, and then shoot house, and, well, a lot of, most of the work's been done by Lisa Holland, yeah, Holland.
And Steve, Steve Sidney came through town and had a chance to go out and look at it and was very complimentary of the whole range and how well it's been kept up. Yep. And it was named after his dad, Raymond Sidney Pistol Range. So, uh, he was very pleased that how well it's being taken care of and, and some of the upgrades that's been done out there.
Yeah, he commented on what, how much the council and everybody has done to help move the, all departments, help move the city ahead. So, okay, uh, last item, uh, if anybody would like to make a motion, we could adjourn.
Like, get back to, back to road.
I don't like most of the, okay, and, and can we have a second to that?
I'll second the mayor.
Phipps, and, uh, roll call.
Mr. Cox. Mr. Raven. Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
No.
Mayor Hall.
This is pivotal.
Tiebreaker.
Uh, yes, sir. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.